Hello everyone, my name is Dr. Jasmine Nolan-Echols. I am calling the special meeting to order for the City Charter Commission, receiving a special presentation from, is it Dr. Todd Swanstrom?
That's correct.
I did good, okay?
You did real good.
The floor is yours completely for your presentation pertaining to anything that will help us in this process that you may be able to inform us or educate us on today.
Thank you, thank you. And good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by thanking you for your service on this commission. We all want to make St. Louis a better place, and you're doing important work. And I really commend you for this. I served on a charter revision commission many years ago, back in the 90s in Albany, New York. By the way, I hope everybody can hear me, please raise your hand if you can, okay? And when I got this invitation, I took it to my boss, that is, my wife, and I asked her, you know, how, is it okay to do this? And she said, well, how long is it gonna take? And I said, they said, six months. And of course, it ended up taking a year and a half to two years, right? So it turned out to be a major commitment. So in your case, there's good news and bad news, as the saying goes, right? The good news is you have a deadline. And this is not going to extend out apparently into a long, year and a half, two-year-long process. The bad news is you have a deadline, right? Which is to say you only have so much time to get your work done. And, you know, when you, the legislation setting up this process called for a community-driven process, modeled on the Ferguson Commission, that's, that's great advice, right? But it's difficult to do it in a few months. So, you know, you've really got a challenge, and you really have to think about how you're going to engage with the public. My mother used to always say to me, there's no such thing as too much communication, Todd. And there's also no such thing as too much community engagement. You can't do too much out there talking to folks on the grassroots about whatever you're planning to do. You've got to be very cognizant of that. And history shows, I'm gonna go over the history of charter reform in St. Louis. History shows that charter reforms are very difficult to get approved by the voters. There are many, many more failures than there are successes. And in your case, you need a supermajority. You need 60% plus, as I understand it. So you've got a real challenge in front of you, and you need to be very realistic about that. It's easier to oppose change than it is to support it. We all know that, right? It's easier to snipe at something than to be supporting some change. I'll talk about the 2004 effort to reform the charter, in which it was attacked as support for the Confederate flag. Talk about, talk about rhetoric, right? So, Robert Salisbury, a professor at Washington University, commenting on failed charter reform efforts in 1950 and 1957, wrote these words. "Efforts to change the government structure triggered, as most issues do not, a process of symbolization, which activates large numbers of persons and groups throughout the city until the class character of the struggle becomes inescapable and the substantive policy interests originally at stake are buried in a rhetorical avalanche." So be prepared. Now, that was before the age of social media, right? When people can post stuff anytime they want. And so be prepared that there may be a rhetorical avalanche in response to your proposals. So a repeated theme in the history of charter reform in St. Louis is that revision efforts are viewed as efforts by elites, especially business elites, to take the government away from the people and neighborhood interests. So be aware that that's how these changes are often perceived, even though you may not intend that at all, right? And I don't think the 2004 effort was intended that way either. So the lesson is you need to avoid any hint that charter revision is driven by middle and upper-class business interests and working against the interests of working-class people and local elected officials and neighborhood interests. So that's the broad theme. So what I'm going to do today, and there should be plenty of time for Q and A, I'm not gonna take up the whole time. Whoops, just lost my computer. There we go. I'm gonna go quickly over the long sweep of the history of charter revision in St. Louis. By the way, I'm not a historian, so I'm basing this on a synthesis of existing secondary works. And then I'm gonna get into a little more detail on the most recent effort in 2004, where I did do original research, interviewed people, and produced an article, I think some of you may have read. The title of that article, which I wrote with Dr. Croft, Bob Croft at St. Louis University, was titled, "Déjà vu all over again." You may be familiar with Yogi Berra's phrase. Well, I hope that when you finish your work, it's not déjà vu all over again, all over again, okay? Because there's a long history of failed charter revision. So this process of charter revision has a long history in the United States. Americans have always been very suspicious of executive authority and of strong government. In fact, our revolution was against the power of parliament to tell us what to do here in the United States, and the power of King George III, right? And so our original government was the Articles of Confederation. Some of you may have read about this in your civics courses that I've taught in Toronto Government many times, in which the government had no direct powers of taxation and had a plural executive, right? There was no one person in charge. So that system was viewed as, you know, as dysfunctional, as too fragmented and too weak. And in some ways, I think we're in that same situation in St. Louis, you know? We need to revise the Articles of Confederation. So the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia was the original Charter Revision Commission. They were originally supposed to just revise the Articles of Confederation, but they decided they were going to rewrite and propose a whole new constitution, but that's another story. But I think the important thing about this original Charter Revision Commission is that these ideas for the US Constitution, which were kind of thought that they were almost divinely inspired, right? Did not come right out of the minds of these brilliant framers. They were a tissue of political compromises. Federalism is a political compromise between those who wanted a strong federal government and those who wanted stronger state governments, right? So to think, don't think of your work as a charter revision, that you're coming up, that it's a platonic exercise in which you're trying to find the ideal form. It is a thoroughly political process from beginning to end. And I learned that when I served on the Charter Revision Commission in Albany. You wouldn't believe the politics that occurred. And by the way, we finally succeeded in proposing charter revisions that were passed by the voters, so it can be done. And it is a thoroughly political process in the best sense of the term "politics." What do I mean by "politics"? I'll give you my definition of "politics," which is the process by which differing interests within the city are conciliated by giving them a share in power and decision-making. So your goal is to do politics that you can make most of the major interests in the city feel as though they've been consulted, and they're part of this, and their interests are represented in what you're going to propose. Cities, by the way, are, you probably all know, are not mentioned in the US Constitution. There's something called Dillon's Rule, which says that state legislatures totally control cities. Cities have no power on their own. All their power comes from the state legislature, from the states. However, in the post-Civil War period, there was something called the Home Rule Movement. And what the Home Rule Movement was, is a movement that said cities should be able to write their own charters, to write their own constitutions, right? And, and this movement gained force after the Civil War. And by the way, St. Louis, and this is, I think, very interesting, and I don't hear this talked about very much. We are the very, very first home-rule charter city in the nation. We were the first city in the United States that got the right, under the Missouri Constitution, to write their own charter, to write how they were going to be governed. So this is a proud tradition. I mean, we go back a long ways. And of course, the original charter was the 1876 Charter, probably more famous for the so-called Great Divorce, right? In which the city and county got divorced, and the city of St. Louis's borders got fixed in concrete. That's a separate problem, we're not gonna talk about that today. But the city charter that was approved as part of the 1876 deal that was passed epitomized, once again, this American tradition of being suspicious of centralized power. It inaugurated a system, a weak mayor system of government, in which the mayor does not control most administrative offices in the city. It also inaugurated a bicameral legislature, which, an upper and a lower house. You had a House of Delegates elected by wards, and another city council elected at large, which of course made it much more difficult to get things through. But that reflected people's suspicion, right, about government, and that government could be used by powerful interests to, for their benefit at the expense of the public. As one historian put it about the original 1876 city charter, quote, "The city was check and balance to death, with responsible leadership virtually impossible." I don't think we're quite as bad at that right now, but frankly, we're in a situation somewhat like that, in my opinion. We can talk about this in the Q and A period. There was various efforts after 1876 to reform the charter. In 1911, there was a charter revision effort by business reformers to create economy and efficiency in government. They proposed a unicameral legislature, elected at large, unicameral Board of Aldermen, if you will, and a strong mayor form of government. It was viewed as an instrument of the wealthy elites, or what was called back then the big cinch, which was all the bankers and lawyers and downtown interests, right? And it lost three to one. 75% of the people voted against it. Once again, that theme, that if voters feel that this is an attempt to centralize government and make government more powerful at their expense, it's going to be rejected. In 1914, they learned their lesson. The reformers recognized the need to involve the politicians, the working class, and the neighborhood interests, or ward-based interests in the process. They met, according to what I've read, they met twice a week, from April to November in 1913, 52 separate meetings of the Charter Revision Commission, all open to the public, right? Can you imagine that? They shifted to a unicameral legislature, elected at large, and a Board of Estoppelung Apportionment. So those kind of cut in different directions, right? The unicameral legislature sort of unifies power in some way. The Board of Estoppelung Apportionment, once again, provides a lot of checks and balances, right? Because you have to get three votes or two votes to get anything done. But it also included, and this was the crucial dimension that got the 1914 charter through. It included, originally, the business people didn't necessarily want this, but it included initiative, referendum, and recall. You know, these kind of, these kind of power-to-the-people reforms that were advocated in the early 20th century, right? And it passed with 51.5% of the vote. So it squeaked by in this kind of compromise, right? Between more democratic grassroots, you might say, democratic involvement versus a stronger, at least, Board of Aldermen. So, since then, there's been a perception that it's still a system that is kind of checked and balanced to death, that is highly fragmented, that gives maybe too much power to ward-based interests. So there have been several efforts to try to reform the 1914 Charter. And under the 1914 Charter, coming up into the contemporary period, basically, ward bosses or ward healers controlled a lot of patronage jobs. There was a lot of decentralization. There were a lot of ways in which you had to get the approval of your alderman to get things done, right? And there was a feeling, especially among business interests, that this slowed development, that it made the city less dynamic and less ability to grow. So in 1950, there was an effort, moved toward a strong mayor system of government, eliminate patronage jobs by spreading civil service protection. So this was, you know, a classic business reform effort to create economy and efficiency in government by centralizing power under the mayor, and it got 36% of the vote. Didn't even get close to passing. In 1957, there was another effort, was aimed more at the Board of Aldermen. It reduced the Board of Aldermen from 28 to 14, and then included seven members of the Board of Aldermen elected at large. Under the sort of business reform principle, electing aldermen at large will reduce those narrow parochial interests in the neighborhoods, right? And give the broader public interest more expression. That particular proposal got less than 40% of the vote. So those were two classic business reform initiatives, right? That, you know, and by the way, you know, am I against this particular direction? Not necessarily. But you have to understand the politics of this, right? So in 2004, there was another charter reform effort that failed. This is the one that Dr. Croft and I wrote an article about. I attended several meetings. There were experts who were consulted on this by the National League of Cities, which led some of the civic engagement process. So a bunch of people, myself included, were invited to meetings. Frankly, I felt that they weren't really consulting me, that they'd already made up their mind, right, and what they were gonna do. I mean, you know, people don't like that feeling, by the way. They do not like that feeling that if you come to them and say, "I want to hear you, what you want to say." But you know already that they seem like they already know exactly what they're gonna recommend. And that's the way we felt. And a number of us talked at the time. Why are they even talking to us, right? It also had a, it was led by Civic Progress, which is, of course, all the major corporations in St. Louis. The main concern was this weak mayor, ward-based system in St. Louis, that the business class, especially downtown businesses, and the leaders of Civic Progress felt slowed down economic development in the city. This whole idea of aldermancy courtesy, right, that you had to get the alderman's approval, and in some cases, cut deals with the alderman. And we all know that this has been a problem recently, right? With the president of the Board of Aldermen, a couple other members of the Board of Aldermen got convicted, right? Of corruption that is shaking down interests in order to get permission for development. So there clearly is kind of issue here, right? They did an extensive process of civic engagement, by the way, in the 2004 proposal. They had a stakeholder assembly with 150 members in it. And now, one of the problems here is, they forbid any politicians to be on the stakeholder assembly. So it was very much against the politicians. The view was that the politicians are corrupt, right? And the politicians, the elected officials, are bought into the system, and they won't recommend change. They had eight meetings of a stakeholder assembly. The people we interviewed said that it did not feel like a truly deliberative body. It did not feel like they had any say. It's like they already knew, once again, what they were going to propose. And by the way, the proposal came out of something called the Walker Commission eight years earlier, and they advocated exactly what the Walker Commission had recommended, right? Which was a business-dominated commission, once again. So people felt it was kind of a window dressing, the stakeholder assembly. They proposed four changes to the city charter to replace the Board of Estoppelung Apportionment with a finance department under the mayor, to reduce the number of county-elected officials and put some of those offices underneath the mayor, as is traditional and most strong mayor forms of government in the United States, by the way, create an administrative, chief administrative officer to administer some of the more strictly administrative functions of city government, and to reduce the size of the Board of Aldermen. It's a classic case of middle-class business reform agenda to make the city increase its economy and efficiency, right? Make it a more straightforward and, and powerful entity. There was rhetorical excess on both sides. Remember, I talked about the rhetorical avalanche? There were billboards around town, next to the depiction of the Confederate flag, the billboards read, quote, "A vote for charter amendments A, B, C, and D equals support for the Confederate flag. A vote against A, B, C, and D protects your right to vote." It turns out the billboards were erected by a 33-year-old white man who worked in the family's bar on the South Side. And the St. Louis Post-Dispatch responded to this attack on the charter reform proposals, right? And here's what they said, which I think is another problem of rhetorical excess, right? They lashed out at the billboards as a despicable effort by, quote, "the feeder pigs." That is, the elected party officials, right? Who are now squealing and wriggling to keep their place at the public trough. Well, if you attack elected officials as a bunch of pigs, right? Swilling at the trough, you're hardly gonna get a lot of support from them, right, in your proposal. That's not politics, as I said it, right? Which is this process of conciliating people by giving them a share or a feeling of being consulted and part of the process. So not one of the four charter proposals got 50% of the vote, even though it needed 60%. There was a predictable backlash against classic business reform proposals. The lower-income and largely African-American wards voted overwhelmingly against it. The only places that gave it strong support were in the central corridor, the so-called stockings boards of higher-income, largely white populations. So, in conclusion, now, what recommendations, what do we learn from history? First is, we learn about the process of charter revision, which is you need a deep process of civic engagement. And that's why I'm worried that you have a short timeframe, right? I like the fact, by the way, that this process has not been led by Civic Progress, has not been orchestrated by the big corporations in St. Louis. It was led by the public sector, by government. And you've been appointed, as I understand it, it's kind of a complex process, right? But by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor, which is good. You're involving elected officials and people who are in government in this process. So I think that's great. You have your ear to the ground. I've looked at, you know, who's on this commission. It looks like a, you look like a pretty good group, right? You're not some elites, you know, living out in Clayton or whatever. You're not, you've, you've involved the so-called feeder pigs, right, in the process, right? As the Post-Dispatch so despairingly described elected officials. That's good. So I really like the process that way. But don't become identified with any political figure. If your reforms get identified with a particular political figure, whether it's the president, whether it's the president of the Board of Aldermen or the mayor, or for that matter, any particular political interest, it's going to be polarizing, it's going to be difficult. I mean, as often as you can with civic groups, follow my mother's advice. There's no such thing as too much communications, that's some, not, no such thing as too much civic engagement. Okay, with regard to substance, you know, what it is that you're going to recommend. This is not my emphasis. It's not from me here, Professor Swanstrom, to tell you what you should advocate for, right? But I'm gonna make some, talk about a few general principles, a few broad principles. As I've said, many previous reform efforts have been typecast or stereotyped as representing the interests of the business elite class in St. Louis. You have to watch out about this. You need to balance strengthening the mayor and centralizing administrative authority, which parenthetically, I'll say, this is my opinion, not, I'm not an expert. I'm not, this is not Professor Swanstrom having the definitive view, right? I think we need some of this, right? I think we need to get rid of all these county-elected offices. I think we need to simplify the administrative structure. I think we need to centralize the budgetary process, et cetera. But we also need to balance that with other things that empower the people, that empower grassroots neighborhood interests, that involve them in government at the same time. So if you propose one set of proposals that emphasize the centralization and streamlining of government, I think you're gonna lose, if history is any lesson, right? I could be wrong, by the way. You could propose these things, and maybe I'll be, Swanstrom will be totally wrong, and 100 years of history, really, more than that, will be proven wrong. But, you know, so what are some of the things you can do? Well, and once again, I'm not recommending these. I'm just saying you need to think about how you get positioned as recommending something that is both creating economy and efficiency in government and democratic accountability and transparency in government, okay? So things like, you know, putting the elections on cycle with the major federal elections. The research is pretty clear that that tends to empower more working-class and minority voters. Because they voted a higher rate in these high, high-value federal elections. Strengthening the Board of Aldermen in general as a policymaking authority and check on the mayor would, of course, be smart. Perhaps formalizing the role of neighborhoods and responding to new developments and more transparency in government. Whatever you can do to create transparency, because one thing the internet does is it creates the possibility of shining a light. You know, it's Justice Brandeis who said, you know, one of the great, and, you know, transparency is the great, is the great way to counter and corruption and insider dealing, right? So let me, let me stop there. I'm glad to comment on any specific proposals you have in mind. And let me just say, let me conclude with this, which is, I would say that, and I mean this sincerely, that any successful effort to reform the city government in St. Louis would be a significant step forward, because it would show that the city can modernize itself, right, that it is capable of change. So that, I think, would be very important. So let me stop there, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to talk about anything that I talked about, or anything on your mind, for that matter.
I wanted to start by saying thank you very much for your presentation and the points in which you mentioned for us to all reflect on as we are preparing for our initial summaries pertaining to the recommendations that we are going to discuss, debate, deliberate, and put forth. I'm going to yield the floor to all commissioners to ask any questions you may have the professor at this time. Any questions? Okay, I have a few. I'll start with mine. Oh, if you guys have questions, you're on, you got to unmute yourself and ask your questions. I would prefer you guys to go first, but if you don't have any questions, then I'll go ahead and ask mine.
Anna, you're muted.
Intactly, Anna, do you have any questions?
Okay, I've got it.
I think Anna does, but she's muted, okay.
Sorry, I was, I'm unfamiliar, I came in through Google this time, as opposed to my other stuff, and I'm not familiar with where the screens are on this. Thank you very much, Professor Swanstrom, for, for your interesting list of all of the times that we have tried as a city and failed to to actually be successful at charter reform. I actually was one of those 150 back there in 2003 or '04 that were involved in that particular effort and was one of a smaller group then that was charged with going out and trying to defend some of those, some of those proposed amendments, debating people like Jim Shrewsbury and others in public about, about them. And so I have some, some not very fond memories of that whole part. My, my general recollection of, of what failed that time was that, you know, those, those four amendments kind of took on everybody. They, we didn't have a single ally in our corner, because, because everybody was, was, was anti one or another of the amendments at that point. And so the effort did really nothing to try to create alliances and build relationships that were important. Instead, we had huge numbers of patronage positions, et cetera, where people were just putting signs out on their lawns and doing everything they could, because it was their livelihood that was, was, it was at, at risk. And so this time around, I certainly feel sensitive to some of these kinds of issues and want to be able to not only create successful change for the city, progress for the city, but also balance things so that, as you say, we really, we really do make a difference, but we solve, we solve needs for many different sectors of the city. As I've started to think about, you know, what does it look like? And what parts of the city seem to be? What I've heard over and over again from constituents and others are that one of the greatest challenges we have is lack of accountability, that, you know, comes in all forms and shapes, depending on, you know, depending on what the issue is, what the, you know, et cetera. But that we have a general lack of accountability because of weaknesses in the system. And, and a lot of it comes back to the Board of ENA and the fact that while it does divvy up responsibility or it also creates weaknesses, because nobody's really in charge. It's easy to point fingers at other people. But then the question becomes, how do you really, you know, what kind of a system can you put together to try to be able to balance that and still keep, still stay in touch with community needs, with, be responsive, responsive to community needs? And I'm intrigued, and I wonder what you know about this. In one of our interviews was raised, raised the issue. You know, when we look at, you know, of course, you can move the, if you divide up comptrollership, if you, the comptroller's job, and you take and you create a finance department, move all the financial functions, contracts, and everything else over to the mayor's department, we can beef up the Board of Aldermen, who really want to be a city council anyway. And at that point, then, we want to, you know, we want to give them responsibility, not just to, you know, just to cut, but also to add budget line, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I had, make them a true legislative, more stronger legislative entity. The question then becomes that there are all these kind of, you know, in-betweens that don't fit in one or the other of those areas. And somebody mentioned that, I think it's New York, or that there is the opportunity in certain city structures, for instance, to have a, an office of public advocate or a ombuds person position that's elected by the people, that we might be able to put the oversight committees under, the audit function, different kinds of things that would help to ensure that the city itself, that the constituents of the city would be able to, to have a place that was actually acting on their behalf as a, as a balance to both the legislative and the, and the executive processes. What are your thoughts about those kinds of structures? And what do you know about how they work and how they don't work?
First, I want to thank you for all your wonderful service to the International Senate and everything you did over the years, so thank you very much. You've raised, I think, a crucial question here. You know, this is a rather, I think we're at an inflection point at the city, because my understanding is the city is sitting on about $500 million, right? They've gotta spend. And some of that, they have to spend by 2026. And the process of spending in the city And the process of spending in the city is so complicated and the sign offs and the, and the kind of, as you pointed out, um, uh, Ms. Crossland, you know, the way things get kind of convoluted, right? And, you know, it's, 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 it's just very difficult. So, we need to have a more, um, efficient process of city contracted media, more, more direct lines of authority, you know, that people are in charge, that they got, they're, 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 they're and not have it so, as you said, it's so diffused now that no one knows who's in charge, right? Um, so there is, there is potentially a trade off between, um, having clean lines of authority, right, and, 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 and a more hierarchical system, frankly, where certain people in charge, right, um, uh, and, uh, accountability. Uh, because we want both, right, we want it to be timely and efficient and get things done. The voters want things done in the city, they want the trash picked up. They'd like to have, they'd like to have the recycling program work as, as good as possible, they'd like, you know, they'd like, uh, improvements to the streets so that people are driving like crazy, I'll, I'll, they want things done, right? But they also want, as you pointed out, accountability, so I don't, you know, I'll, uh, I'll have to say that I, I am not, um, intimately familiar with, uh, particular, um, charter proposals, although what you mentioned here certainly makes a lot of sense to me and I would encourage you to look into it deeper, but here's what I'm gonna say, you know, because I think, um, having, you know, ultimately, ultimately, it's civil society that holds government accountable. By civil society, I mean groups out there, right, that examine the budget and take a look at, including, I would include by that journalists, right, who write articles of what's going on in government. That's ultimately what holds it accountable, not a government office, but if you have a government office, as you said, like an office of public advocate, that provided, that guaranteed transparency and put out reports, um, and made it easy, right, for civic groups to find out what's going on, to find out. As, as you want example here, this is different than what you're talking about, but, you know, neighborhoods should not find out about a development after it's already, you know, kind of written in stone, right? They should find out about it when developers proposing something early on in the process. Then they feel more trusting of government if they're being consulted early on. Um, I'm, I, I'm involved here with the, uh, Le- Le Cleet, you know, Neighborhood Association here, at West Pine Neighborhood Association, and we debate, you know, developments occurring in our neighborhood and and it makes me, it makes us feel good, we have some power, right? Uh, and we are informed about these developments before they're written in stone. So all I've got to say, I don't have a really good answer to your, to your question, but I would say, while there is a trade off between economy and efficiency and accountability, right? You can imagine a system which is highly centralized and has very little accountability, but you can have a system that's much more efficient and effective than what we have now and is also accountable. And I would say the main way to do that is through transparency. Which in the, it, but one of the great advantages, the internet has lots of problems in my opinion, but one of its great advantages, you can post things on the internet and anybody can, can download them, right? So if you required that kind of transparency, you would encourage civic groups to get involved. And you need, you know, ultimately, you need those civic groups and the journalists and the others, right, to hold the office makers accountable, I hope I was at least somewhat responsive to your question.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, I've been thinking about this lately and wondering how you build that accountability and it seems to me that it's the people wants, want an entity of some sort that, that is, i- is helping them to ensure that accountability by revealing, you know, what the, what the realities are in a, in a trustworthy manner.
Well, you know, I think, I think the, the citizens out there are confused by a city government, there's so many different offices. I, according to my count, there's something like nine separately elected citywide offices, I mean, people can't pay attention to nine separate, separate, you know, people in charge, right? So, um, as, as somebody once commented on the New York Constitution earlier in the twentieth century, it looks like, the organizational chart looks like it was, it was written by a drunken spider, right, I mean, it's all over the place, right? It's not, there's not the clean lines of authority that you can trace up to the decision makers. So we gotta get this drunken spider, right? Dr. Nolan Echols, we gotta, we gotta go from a drunken spider to, uh, something a little bit more, something a little bit more coherent, I think.
Completely agree, the first time I saw it and the very first uh, professor we had on to present regarding it and I was reading while he was presenting and I believe at the second special meeting I said, it's just a poorly written business document. Uh, because professionally I rewrite and orchestrate these governing documents, I'm familiar with the process of what it means to have it amended and have these types of governing bylaw kind of structures truly operate and manage businesses efficiently um, and create the foundation for their efficiency. So when I read our chart, I said, there is no way we are operating by way of efficiency and effectiveness with this. If, if this is what we're actually using, and then as the process has gone on, we found that really ordinances is what the city is using to manage, operate and govern itself. But even when you read more than half of those, they aren't written in a way where again transparency and accountability, effectiveness, efficiency, just all of those aspects are within how it is structurally written. So, I try to not say too, too much, but just in my, in my reading of it continually, article after article, I can't, I can't begin to understand how we've operated the city off of this document this way. For this one.
I think you put it so well, uh, and it's not that, uh, if you put more functions directly under the mayor, I'm not, it's your judgment as to exactly what. That, in my opinion, makes the system ultimately more democratic and accountable, where you can say, if he or she doesn't do it, I'll elect someone else, right, but right now, it's so complicated and so convoluted that you don't know who to hold responsible, I think in most cases, right?
Yeah, I think also we've seen, I've, I've heard, I want to say maybe eight times where individuals don't want to put who's accountable or responsible for certain things in the charter. Um, I have conflict with that because I have not written governing documents where it's not clear who is responsible for what or why or how or anything of that nature. Um, we have this kind of notion of keeping things simple and let's keep it simplistic and you know, all of this, but truly governing documents are supposed to be the most clearly concrete concisely written items that you should find in any institution of, of, of operations. I just, that's a conflict that I've had thus far with, with the process, which is why I've requested several special meetings to help kind of drive this, this aspect of it, this is not a simple fix. This is like, it cannot be, um, just as simple as, you know, continuing to not document who is responsible or who is accountable or who somebody is accountable or responsible to, we can't say we're doing recommendations for the best interest of the people and the people can't follow what it is that's governing them, it just, it's a conflict for me, so it just.
Well, I, I have a PhD in political science and I've studied it for forty years and I know a certain amount about, you know, St. Louis City Government, and I, I have trouble figuring it out often, you know, my daughter works for the city, I live in the city, I'm a taxpayer in the city and I find it often kind of overwhelming, like all these different offices and who's in charge and uh, so, you know, th- this idea that, you know, authority and power are not bad enough themselves, they're good and they can get things done. But they also need to be accountable and transparent, that's, that's, that, that's, that, you know, you need to make sure you do both at once.
Well, and I think the balancing act that we are very cognizant of on the, um, um, on the commission is that, um, this needs to be a somewhat living document because it may be a while, if we manage to pass something, it may be a while until we have a chance to be able to pass something again. And so to the degree that actually we fix things in, in a way that is largely immutable, then in a few years when things may have changed, that may in fact hamper progress. And so we have a balancing act, which is clarity versus flexibility. And, um, I think that's what we really want to focus on in the amendments and in the, um, uh, document changes that we make right now, because, um, to me at least, a charter is more like the constitution, um, as opposed to the laws and, uh, legislation, um, which are really the ordinances at that point. And so we want to make sure that we have a, a living document that, that does the city well for, for a long time.
Well, you're making a really good point, because the US Constitution, by the way, is extremely short documented. What that means is, we've been fighting about the US Constitution for two hundred, over two hundred years, right? Um, and the reason why is they put things in relatively vague or open terms, ambiguous terms, right? It did that ambiguity, by the way, as I tell my students, is, is the mother of political coalitions, which is to say, if you're somewhat ambiguous and leave it somewhat open. Now, you may say, well, this is not perfect, the city charter, the St. Louis City Charter is very detailed, get into it sometime, I mean, you know, uh, it's really detailed, it's better in some cases to put things in more general ways, as you say, as a living document. And, and that just, it defers battles, I understand, down the way, right, but you can't solve everything now. Uh, the, the, the perfect is the enemy of the good, if you do something that gives us some flexibility, gives us some more clear lines of authority, right, and clear lines of accountability and transparency, that is a step in the right direction, you can't solve everything right now, you know, by laying it out in specificity.
Yeah, we could yield the floor to Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Garth.
I'll, I'll be, uh, quick as I can, I do have to have another meeting, uh, but, um, Professor Swannstrom, thank you for, uh, your presentation and, um, I, I just wanted to, um, kind of go back to something you said, which really is standing out to me, and that is, um, you may mention about how there are those that are loyal to certain individuals, certain ideologies or whatever, and everybody on here knows, I mean, anyone that's lived in the city long enough knows, city of St. Louis is clickish, okay? Let, 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 let's go ahead and just address the elephant in the room, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mix words here, I was gonna shoot straight from the hip here. Um, it, it's known that it operates from a clickish standpoint, and so what is your idea or what are your thoughts on bridging the gap between behavior versus process? Because we already see that the process, and we can talk about accountability and all that, a- all day, every day and twice on Sunday, but at the end of the day, you can have it, you can have the transparency and you can maybe try and get some accountability in there, but the problem, the real root, is the behavior and a lot of this has been around for a very long time, I mean, for myself, I don't know, for Dr. Echols, we've seen this since we were knee high off the ground. I mean, these are the facts, and so, we know different ones want to try and dispel the Delmar divide. Guess what, there is a divide, there is a Mason Dixon line in the city of St. Louis, no one wants to talk about that a- a- as, as much. Or, um, the fact that you have certain factions of people who are loyal to, oh, well, they're the South Side progressives, or there are those who are loyal to this particular alderman or this particular, um, uh, political activist or whatever, so at the end of the day, my question is, what can be done to help bridge that gap? Because we can sit here and we can debate and we can come up with the ideas and try to sell that to the people, but if the people are already set in their ways, quote unquote, then yeah, we have the running tally of, hey, this part's gonna fail again, or this is gonna fail again.
Well, you, you put your, you put your finger on the problem, you should, you should be a political scientist perhaps, maybe come into my class and tell me about the realities of politics, but here's what I, here's what I would say, and I, I'm gonna be a little bit, um, philosophical, and so excuse me in this, but there's a famous political philosopher said, when you're writing a constitution, you need to stand behind the veil of ignorance, which is to say, you stand behind a curtain and you don't know where you'll end up, you don't know if you're gonna end up in this new system, black or white, rich or poor, um, in the north side or the south side or wherever, so you need to write this as if you're not, you know, related to any particular interest, and you might randomly, you might be born tomorrow as, I don't know, a wealthy businessman in downtown, that's okay, we gotta get them involved too, right? So essentially, you know, what you're trying to do is, uh, and believe it or not, um, Mr. Garth, people do have a sense of the public interest, I know it sometimes we can lose our faith, right? But people do think about the public interest, they do want to at least put their positions in terms of the public interest, right? And say, this is good for the city, right? So it's your job to write rules, the rule of law, such that it is fair to everybody or all of the major interests, nothing is perfect, right? And so you need to kind of get into that mindset that you're behind the veil of ignorance, you don't know where you're gonna end up and you gotta be fair to the people you don't like. You know, I mean, you know, so, you know, so, um, you know, are these, uh, these neighborhood interests and these ward healers who want everything in the ward to be determined by what's happening in my, you know, little, little ward or whatever, you know? Yeah, that's actually important, we need those people too, right? Maybe, the, the whole can't be happy if the parts aren't happy, is the way I put it. So there's a balance there, right, there's a citywide interest, but there's also the interest of a specific neighbor and often they come in conflict. You're not settling that conflict, you're just setting the rules by which that conflict will be processed in such a way that hopefully everyone will feel as though they were, you know, I say conciliated, or, or consulted or whatever. So, um, I don't have a, I don't have an easy, you, you, you've got the tough question here, but it's your job, as I said, to act as if you, uh, want everyone, including the people you don't like, uh, to feel like they're part of the system. Okay, and that, that's a tough job.
Thank you again.
Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Grant, it's floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Professor, for being here, um, answering our questions. Montificating on John Rawls. I, 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 I have some, uh, uh, very specific questions, uh, about proposals that have been put forth to the, um, uh, the commission, I'd kind of like your thoughts on, there are three things that, that, specific proposals. Um, I'd like your opinion on, as, uh, someone who studied St. Louis and generally political science. One is the pros and cons of at-large districts as far as, um, uh, the, I suppose, a form of better, uh, representation versus the diminishment of minority power. Two, moving elections, uh, local elections from, uh, March and April dates to November dates as far as, um, maybe increasing participation, uh, if you go to November versus, uh, a perhaps, uh, increase in corporate and money interests being able to influence the elections in November. And three, uh, the city, a city manager position that's used in a lot of municipalities and cities in Missouri, including Kansas City and many of our suburbs, as far as, I guess, in a way, increasing efficiency and accountability versus the detriments of, uh, a lack of, um, uh, direct, uh, or the, sort of a lessening of democracy in a way, if, uh, uh, or, uh, uh, under a city manager system.
Good, I, 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 before I preface, preface, preface my remarks with that, um, uh, my views on these are not, um, uh, you know, um, definitive, you know, conclusions of a political scientist, because values come in, there's no way around, you know? So with regard to number, the first one, to move from, from a ward based to at-large elections, the literature is clear that, um, that tends to, other things being equal, reduce the representation of working class minority and lower income interest, the reason being is, you know, you know, in the city of St. Louis, when we had our small wards, twenty-eight wards, you could almost go, you could literally go door to door into every single potential voter, you know, prior to the election, right? They were so small, those wards, I think they were probably too small and I generally favor it on the reduction to fourteen, given how much our population has declined, right? So, but there's no doubt that, uh, other things being equal, moving to at-large elections, um, is, uh, going to reduce uh, the representation of, um, uh, lower income, uh, minority and less professional, let's say, less middle-class professional interests, right? Because they're, they're, they're gonna have to raise more money to conduct a citywide campaign, right, there's no doubt about that. Um, now, a lot of cities do succeed by having a mix of at-large and, and ward-based, district-based elections, so that's one possibility, right? To mix those principles, because running at-large does require you to articulate more of a citywide vision, right? So in some ways, that's good. Um, but in most systems, that balance is, you know, the mayor and the president of the Board of Aldermen have to articulate a citywide vision, right? So you've already got to a certain extent that balance, you know, in the government. With regard to the second one, the switch to November elections, once again, the literature is, is pretty clear here that this does increase turnout by working class, lower income and minority interests, right? Other things being equal. You always have to, you say, you said, there is parabos, right, you know, other things You always have to, you say, you said, there is parabos, right? You know, other things being equal. Uh but if you switch to November elections, you can have a larger turnout. That larger turnout is not gonna be so skewed toward homeowners. And middle-class and higher-income interests, right? So if you switch to November cycle, you said, there's also more money in in the November cycle. There's a potential there of. Perhaps uh money dominating the election, but you'll notice there's a lot of things going on, you know, during the federal election cycle. I'm not sure how much of it would be, you know, would be shifted easily into um, you know, St. Louis citywide, you know, races. Um or St. Louis races more generally. The third one, the city manager proposal, there there really was a movement toward the city manager system. Uh earlier in the twentieth century, and for smaller cities around the country, the city manager system is extremely popular. And um, you know, here's the, here's, you know, it's a long discussion and there's no perfect solution here, right? But the idea of the city manager is to take the politics out of administration, right? To have somebody who's a professional, who will implement what the council, right, can decide should be the policy of the city. Well, you know, unfortunately, you can't take the politics out of administration. You talk to city managers around the country, they'll tell you, I have to be political. Which is to say, I have to be talking to people so that I can keep a majority of the city council on my side, right? And if I don't, I'm gonna lose my job. So this idea that, you know, you can have sort of the immaculate conception, right? You can have a city manager who's totally free of politics is, I think, mythical, especially in a large, relatively complex, racially diverse. And economically diverse city like St. Louis. So in general, uh Mr. Grant, I'm not inclined toward the city manager proposal. Uh not saying it wouldn't, you know, I think the impulse is good, right? Cuz the impulse is, we do need to take some of the. Politics out of administration. A certain kind of politics can be taken out and other politics is fr- frankly, always gonna be there. So my answer to that is I'm not inclined toward it for a large diversity like St. Louis. You can achieve the same thing, I think, by creating more. Um you by, you know, by expanding um uh. But by creating clearer lines of authority. I mean, the problem in St. Louis is not so much that we don't have a city manager. But you know, what would the city manager be in charge of? There are nine separately elected citywide offices, right? Uh I'm not quite so sure what it would be, you know, it's a complicated. Uh it's got, we kind of have a Rube Goldberg machine. If you've seen those Rube Goldberg cartoons, you know, where you light a cigar. In order to light a cigar, you have to feed a uh a pigeon that pecks on a board, et cetera, et cetera, you know? Our government looks a little bit like a Rube Goldberg machine, and the first thing I think is to make it cleaner lines of authority, right, and responsibility. Um the city manager is, once again, in some ways, it's a good idea, but I'm not sure it would work so well for a bigger city like St. Louis. Although other cities have done it like Kansas City, like you said, and I would talk to them and see, you know, what they what they think.
Commissioner Grant, anything else? Thank you. I want to, for my question, I wanna go back to your statement. That I've written down from the two thousand and four failed attempt at charter reform that. We have some commissioners that were a part of that process. I have been reached out by the, in your report, in your research and some other. Research and reports that were done from that process. The black people that were pushed away from that process that were both involved in the committees. On the commission and everything else, and they happened to be around um. A specific, a certain age group and a certain, from a certain population, and all of the different demographical. Ideas you can think of, they were all in alignment. They were pushed out and away and they left that process. And that hasn't come up in this discussion or many other discussions. But I'm starting to experience some of that in this commission and in my interaction and engagement. Whereas the voice of black women specifically has been silenced in this city for so long. And it's not just the St. Louis thing, but it's pretty much a national thing that we don't recognize it. So much so that everybody that has had a presentation has pretty much asked for their pronouns in the charter to be changed. Um given that the majority of the individuals working in the city happen to reflect being black, being a woman. And being of said neighborhood, said counties, said areas of the city. We understand the percentage and the data related to black people in St. Louis city. Meanwhile, we continue to do efforts, design commissions and hire and employ personnel that don't reflect. The percentage of people that are black in this city. We continue to run females and black females away from these processes. So again, that did not come up in this discussion from the commissioners that were a part of that process then or yourself. But I want to ask specifically, when. Black women are ran away from civic duties, civic discussions. Civic engagement, civic responsibility due to all of the, as Commissioner Garth said, clickish activity. Alignment to politics. A few other layered issues, but they are the primary individuals or people that lead these voting efforts. With other communities, it's not to exclude other communities, but lead those charges, lead those organizations. That get said reform passed. My concern is the lack of accountability for said things. Even the segregation that is still listed clearly in the charter. I believe I may be the only person that has spoken to it being a concern, which means that it is woven into all things. Relative to the city of St. Louis. Um some of those things being the concern of the people. But aren't making it to the priority issue to be addressed in said reforms. So to go back to your statements about. Who actually votes for anything or things in the city to be passed? Who's actually impacted and affected by anything, all things and everything that these processes impact? I think, again, I wanted to make sure these special meetings occur so that some of these issues can be driven home. That two thousand and four attempt to address the charter, black women were pushed away from that process. And they have documented it, researched it, completed articles, did reports on it. They were driven away intentionally. Both politically, personally and professionally from that process. Meanwhile, we have had special meeting after special meeting, say that the minority transparency, involvement, inclusion. Engagement and processes is what has to take priority influence in these things for change to actually occur. But I don't see it. I don't think that we understand the importance. And why these things are continuing to stay the same. So if you could, while we have less than a few minutes. Speak to what it means to engage minorities, primarily black women in these processes. Whether they were born or raised here or not, what it means for them to be involved, to be heard, to be included. And engaged in charter reform processes that are about civic engagement, whether they're political or not. Pertaining to how they live in the city, how they navigate, how they participate. With civic departments, elected officials, divisions, all of these things. There are true horror stories. Behind how black women are treated in the city related to government.
Well, Dr. Nolan Echols, you're probably not going to like my answer. By the way, I totally agree with you about the two thousand and four effort. I believe there were people who were shoved aside and felt they weren't being involved in it. And I think that was a big mistake. And so I agree with you about that process, right? And I heard some of the same things. But, you know, the um uh a. The solution to the problems of democracy is more democracy, more openness, more accountability. Not, remember I said, stand behind the veil of ignorance? So I understand your issue, that black women have been pushed aside, and I agree with you, that has happened, right? By the way, most people don't give a damn about charters. If you go out there and talk to the average person, they start, they'll they'll start yawning when you start talking about charter revision, right? You've gotta persuade sway them that this really affects their life, right? That this is important, and the way it affects their life is, if people are very cynical right now, and I think I I totally understand where you're coming from. But the solution is not to say that this is a process uh that's going to empower black women. No, this is a process that's gonna empower all the citizens, because it's gonna be open. It's gonna become democratic, it's gonna become transparent, it's gonna become clear. It's gonna be, cuz you can get involved now, you can make a difference, right? But not, simply not one group. That's why I say you're probably not gonna like my answer. Because my answer is, you gotta stand behind the veil of ignorance and say, I'm gonna support things that are good for all the citizens subsided, cuz a constitution applies to everybody, right? And democracy and the rule of law, which operates the way it should operate, should give people the energy. Right now, people are often, especially lower-income people, renters, people who, you know, um uh. You know, don't feel in it that it makes any difference. They're cynical about the whole process. They think it's rigged. But if you can create a process which is more open and transparent and empowering, then that will engage them. Uh but this is, you know, the the problems you're talking about are are longstanding. They go back uh centuries, right? So um you gotta think about this charter revision process is a is is a movement on the way. You're not gonna solve this problem overnight with a charter, but hopefully you can create a system where people feel energetic, right? They want to get involved because they know they can make a difference.
I agree. I think I do like your answer. I like your answer. My response to any, every and all people that engage with me about the charter process. Is that it is not specific to a particular issue, area, demographic or anything, but specifically in two thousand and four. The reports show that that particular group of people were omitted, eliminated, told or. Forced out or pushed out or whomever the case may be. And in my reading and my researching, it was identified at least three times. So in research, when I see something repeat itself, that means that it actually occurred. Um and the the uh reporter that you mentioned, in his reports as well, and a few others. So it was, I wanted to make sure that I brought it up in, when you mentioned the two thousand and four reform. Because it did occur to a particular group, to that designated group of people, and it was documented. On a few different, a few different occasions. Um but I did like your answer. Because I tend to yield to an everybody and all people approach, even though my ties. Being who I am and how I am to the city is what it is. It's definitely not, definitely not changing or altering from from that perspective. But. I did wanna say, I know that the time is five thirty-five. I appreciate you for coming to the special meeting for the charter commission. And we are grateful for your time and have answered our questions and participated with us in this process. Pertaining to hopefully modernizing the city charter and making it better for all citizens of the city of St. Louis.
Well, thank you for inviting me and good luck with your work.
Thank you so much.